Sorry, I can't even recall what the requirement was.
It's required two and provided one point five.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
It is.
Okay, here another question. This is a public hearing. I should preface my remarks by saying that we're still awaiting information back from our sources, so we won't make any decisions tonight. But it is a public hearing, so it affords the public an opportunity to, since they've waited this late to go up and speak, just identify yourself.
Mary Jane McGoye. I live at 115 West Quantum Street beside more condos, and I've owned there since 1984. And when I first moved in, 95 West Quantum in my building, we're the only game in town in terms of high-density buildings. So now we have across the street 100 West Quantum. Now we've got this, which is 180 units. So I'm a simple person. My father was a plumber. So I'm figuring out, we have 700 to 800 sinks, toilets, and showers that are all going to be flushing. And is this going to affect the Quincy sewer system? And is it going to affect pollution? And is, I mean, I'm sure you're thinking of it. I haven't heard anything like that, you know, in this meeting. And maybe this isn't the right place for that. So that's one of my concerns. And the other concern is that this looks fabulous, and I hope it's a hit or a merit. And as opposed to another person who was here before was worried about the yuppies, I say, bring them in. Bring in the yuppies, jack up the rents, jack up the taxes, and I'll pay. I'll pay my share. Because if you want something good, you have to pay for it. And we're as good as Newton. We should be Newton. And we even have a shoreline. So I think that's what you have to do. You can't skip on these things. The other thing is, I hear all this stuff about traffic and the cars and whatever. I don't own a car. I take the subway all the time. And what I had noticed about the red line is that a number of years ago, unless you're taking the subway every day like me, what they did was, they got rid of the guy who was in the middle car. It was the conductor, the engineer, then there was the guy in the middle car who really told the conductor that he could continue. Now they only have the one guy that drives the train. So that's why each trip takes forever, because the one guy has to make sure that nobody's trying to get in and out when he's trying to close the doors. So I think if the T was more efficient, if you could somehow get them to be more efficient, and granted, it would cost more money, maybe people would take the T more. Maybe they would park their cars, and maybe they wouldn't have a whole lot of traffic. You know, but I don't know what influence you have with the T.
Everybody wants the T to be better.
Well, that's about it. Thank you.
The only response I give you, which was my remark, we have not had review, the review back from the city departments, and even our peer review. So the information is to whether the public utilities are sufficient size to accommodate the use as something. But I will tell you that under the original proposal, the Public Works Department, and I think even our peer review had said that the utilities were sufficient size to accommodate that use.
Okay. I feel that.
But that will be something that will be gleaned when we meet again.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishes to speak? I'm sorry, Mr. Hines?
If I could just address the, when we had the peer review in the past, it was with the fact that we would expand down, we had a lot, we had a lot. That was always been a consideration, though, starting from down there, there on. So that, this, what we're doing now was always idea that it was going to happen down there. And that's why they would do the, on that street, to see if they could do the storage and stuff.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak?
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in. Chairman Mead, you sort of tipped off that, you know, the review of the revised program has not been completed. We are activating the engineering peer review firm, TEC, who did the original review. So they will update their review based on the new plan set. And to Mary Jane, who I think was one of the first ones here this evening, you know, the city graciously hosted Secretary of Transportation Stephanie Pollak over the summer to tour all four of the MBTA stations. And we are very encouraged with some recent moves by the state, the MBTA, Governor Baker, to authorize the purchase of additional red line cars, as well as new signaling equipment along the red line, with the hopes of being able to accommodate a greater frequency of subway cars to deal with the peak times. We know the red line is often a sardine can leaving North Quincy Station. So that is a big concern. Outside of this project, you know, there is some movement from the state to invest in the infrastructure along the red line. So we're real hopeful for improvements in that area.
Thank you. So I entertain a motion to continue this case till our February.
February?
To, the department says that the motion should be to continue it to our February 8th, 2017 meeting. A motion to that effect?
So.
Second discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That concludes our regular meeting, but a business meeting. We still have one item left, and that is pre-filing presentation of the North Quincy MBTH Station redevelopment proposal, which I assume.
Coming through the door.
Want to speak to that?
We're not ready.
We're not ready. Sure, yeah. While they're setting up, we also had, one of the business items was a review and issue recommendation for the city council on the city council order 2016-74, introduced by Woodford Councilor Brian Pomochi, to amend the City of Quincy Municipal Code, Chapter 375, zoning section 9.0 administration as follows, adding section 9.4.9, minimum mandatory conditions, 9.4.10, remedies, and 9.4.11 appeals to the Quincy Municipal Code. We're not ready to make any recommendation on that at this particular time.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Paul Pines. On your behalf, those developers of North Quincy, I'm sorry, North Quincy Train Station, before you have, sorry, MBTH has designated a development company, too, as a matter of fact, designated to develop North Quincy Train Station, Arizona Zudo Atlantic Development. They had a very short, very short program as to what they plan on doing. And they know they're going to come back to the board many, many times after this. And what they want to do is they want to give you a flavor of what they propose there. This is not, there aren't any finalizations yet. This is just a proposal we've gone through city council. We haven't done everything we have to do through city council. And this is the start of the planning board process. But again, this is a formal meeting. There's really an issue where we're going to come back with a formal proposal. So I want to take this up. You introduce.
Thank you.
DJ McKenna. Thank you, Paul. Thank you. Chairman, members of the board, I'm DJ McKenna from Land Development. Also here with me tonight is Julie Perlman from Zudo Group, Taylor Howell, who's with us in helping with community relations, and Jay Mahoney is also part of our team. So thank you very much. Again, we just wanted to do kind of a brief presentation and kind of give you a flavor of the proposal, so it's kind of on your radar screen. And then, you know, we expect to hopefully be back in the near future with formal filing. Before we get into it, I would say I'd like to thank you very much for, I know you passed upon the design guidelines, the design guidelines that are obviously applicable to the site, which then puts us in a position where we can now start to finalize plans and move forward. So with that.
Yeah. Technical difficulty.
DJ, I wonder if you could inform the board a little bit of the MBTH process that you responded to?
Sure, sure. Yep, so this is a good point. That was one of the slides. Some of the stuff I can just kind of give you off the start. So on the designation, the site itself, it's a seven-acre parcel. It's the entire North Quincy MBTH Station site. There are 852 parking spaces on the surface. So the premise of the RFP was to take the surface parking, put it into a structured parking garage, and then essentially open up the land that remained to be available for development. What the T was looking to do is essentially generate revenue to help any improvements in the overall MBTH system. So it's kind of a revenue-neutral concept with them, where they said, we'll make the land available, but you have to build us this new parking garage, replace all our spaces. So we're doing that as part of the proposal. They would continue to own those spaces, collect the revenue on that, and we, in the meantime, actually pay for any loss of use of the spaces while we're in construction. So I think we're back in. Okay. I used to do this a lot of PowerPoints. I'm too used to it. I need all these prompts. So I think I got the seven acres right, and the 852 spaces. And kind of the way the timeline worked out of this was July 2015, they actually issued the RFP. Bids were submitted in November 2015. And then it is past April, April 2016, is when it was awarded to our joint venture between the land and Zudo. And since then, we've been going through, you know, an awful lot of detail, legal documents, planning, and things like that with the MBTH. So the next slide, we'll jump to that. It's just a quick slide. A lot of you are very familiar with some of the extensive improvements that are occurring. You know, if you look at it from Quincy's standpoint, this last slide reflects the commitment on the last set of rail cars, the 134 cars. What it does in reference is the previous approval for the 350. So I think it's over 400 cars. So every single car on the red line has got to be brand-new. It's over $800 million investment by the T, as well as they're also doing the signalization upgrade and winterization of the red line. So between that, for people that are using the red line, it's, you know, significant investment in reality is, is they're looking to leverage some of their real estate through these long-term ground leases to help pay for it. But the benefit of that investment, as these new cars start to roll out, will, you know, residents of Quincy will be using the red line. So we'll move on to the next slide. I think we all know what the site is. We can just kind of quickly move on to the next one after this. So I've got a couple of turns of the red line. So the site itself is shown in yellow. This is the seven-acre parcel. We've got Hancock Street along the bottom, east and west Quantum Street here. We're not allowed to touch the bus loop, which is on the Quantum Street side, so the buses stay pretty much exactly where they are, so they function in this area. What's available to us is where they work to balance out the seven-acre site. The main entrance with the traffic signal on the Hancock Street is right here. The other end of the site that we are, we'll see on the plans, we are looking to open up is today, it's fenced off along the Sagamaw Street end of the site. But Sagamaw Street is actually a great accessway underneath Hancock Street, and leads up into, you know, continues on the Comanche and Shea Boulevard, Quincy Shore Drive. It feeds a lot of the neighborhoods, just with some. We'll move on to the next slide. This is just one of the initial renderings. It would be from a vantage point of roughly between the parking lot between the condos and fire station, along the Hancock Street side. And what this represents is, in that corner of the site, we're looking to try to activate it with ground-level retail, restaurants, shops. It's kind of the busier corner of the site, you build a lot of walking traffic in that area. The focus right now, which we're hearing a lot from people, is the idea of going with some form of specialty in that area. It seems to be potentially a direction that would make sense. And then put the residential above that. So that's the show on this slide. Still very conceptual, obviously.
Where's the view? So what are we looking at in terms of?
Yeah, so why don't we back up one slide again? So right from this vantage point here, looking in this angle, so really just that corner of the building here.
So you'd access it from Hancock Street, go across McDonald's?
Yeah, so why don't we go to the next slide? We can kind of show you, actually, the direction. I don't keep my focus. Okay. So this will make sense in a second. So we're actually starting with the roof plan. The reason we're starting with the roof plan is, we want to show you what the parking garage is. And the parking garage is actually buried in the middle of the site. Originally, working with the T, they were looking to put the parking garage in the corner, because this is a very prominent structure on the site. And after, you know, some review, a lot of dialogue with people in the city, and some examples that we showed of other garages and other areas where you kind of wrap the building around it, we finally came to this, to this concept. So by putting the garage here, we actually connect it to the headhouse, and then essentially wrap it with the buildings. So this is obviously a straight-down view. And if we go to the next slide, it's going to show us at the ground level what happened. So at ground level, you have the traffic signal here, kind of cleaned up the entranceway a bit, but you come into the site, if you're going to any of the T functions, you actually come into the site, there's a left-turn pocket, you turn left, and these are actually ramps that bring you up into the garage. So people that are just, you know, obviously, there's 852 spaces. Most of those people just come for the day, park the car, hop on the T. Well, they would come in, walk the ramp, park the car for the day, we're not looking at this sea of cars in there. They're going off on the red line. For other people coming in for the T for pickup and kind of drop-off, there's going to be a drop-off lane along the side here, for just a quick drop-off, and then people can exit the site. We do have the kiss-and-ride spaces in this area here, which are a little bit closer when people need to go up into the headhouse. And then we also show along here, the bus waiting area. So the regular bus loop is going to stay for all the numbered bus routes that stays where it is. But if you're down on the North Quincy site, from time to time, you'll see other buses. There are shuttle buses that come. They do have some box switch buses from time to time on the site. The idea is that they would actually use this portion of the site. So that's kind of all the T functions in that area. Separately, for the ground-level retail, we need that to basically function like traditional retail. So you could actually enter the site to the main drive, it'd be surface-level parking for the retail, that allows it to function, complete the retail in the area. And that would operate like regular retail. And also, we don't have all the elements on here now, but there's a lot of more pedestrian-friendly elements, because we have a lot of walking traffic in this area, so we need to provide wider sidewalks, there's entryways. Really incorporate the elements out of the design guidelines that you deliberate about to make sure that it's most more pedestrian-friendly. And then also at ground level.
DJ, quick question. What's the square footage proposed there?
Forty-five thousand. Forty-five thousand, I think that. And then we also have two other pieces that could have a ground level. These are basically the residential lobbies, and we're showing a little bit of retail along the street front in each case, associated with those residential lobbies. If you, we have a little more detailed plans, you'll see the wider sidewalks and the landscaping along those areas as well. And then on this end of the site, this is surface parking under one of the residential buildings here. So that's kind of how the three uses on the site break up to make that work well. And we move to the next.
So from a parking perspective, I think you, is it 892? What was the number of parking space?
Eight fifty-two for the T. All those get replaced.
Right.
Then we have parking for the retail.
Okay, so that's separate.
That's separate, yeah, for the retail. And then in addition to that, we have parking for the residential. Great. We do have an agreement with the T where, I think it's 290 spacing, building?
Like point five, yeah.
Yeah, that we get to use night and weekend in the garage as well. Because if you go to all these T lots at night and weekend, they're empty. So it's part of our agreement with the T, we actually get to use just another 300 of those spaces on nights and weekends. So, okay. So this is just kind of a quick representation. Today, if you drive by, it's this, you know, big parking lot, you can see the office building behind. Again, this is still conceptual, but you know, the idea of introducing, you know, buildings, façades, that are going to be much more in tune with the neighborhood. You know, we are trying to break it up into a long site, and it will ultimately look like, it'll be connected, but it'll look like kind of three city blocks, is the thing we're trying to follow. Let's go to the next slide. Just going to kind of quickly go through some of the bullet points. From a neighborhood standpoint, and we're trying to transform this, you know, large parking lot more into kind of providing a mixed-use community by providing convenient retail for the local community, introducing the safe captain's way for pedestrians to get in off the site, as well as providing the well-lit community parking, indoor parking structure itself. It ends up providing about 150 jobs on a permanent basis to the city, and about $1,006,000 here in real estate tax revenue, as well as a significant contribution to the city's affordable housing and infrastructure goals that is part of the overall proposal. Go to the next slide, which we get the one-time benefits, about 1,100 construction jobs, more under construction, about $2 million construction permit fees. And then to the MBTH, in groundwork, we pay actually over $200 million a year to the T. Now, that is spread out over the term of the 90/90 ground lease, but the reality is, when we start construction, all that red string is locked in and is guaranteed. So it actually provides them with the capability of doing significant one, making it one, as soon as we start construction, tens of millions of dollars to help pay for a lot of those things that we're doing. And then to the city, it's multi, you have all this here, we get access. So. I think that was about it. So again, kind of brief overview, but it was really just to kind of give you kind of a quick introduction.
The mixed-use, what I saw, so is it residential and retail at the bottom, or will there be some business use, commercial use, office space? Is there a vision to have it not just residential, I guess?
We're looking at residential above, and at the ground level to be retail. Could be some type of service in those other small retail notes, but we don't have an, we don't have an office here, no.
Okay. So like, you know, there's space for startups, or space for companies?
Well, I will say, and Julie, maybe talk about this a little bit more, because we did bring some of the people from the city, were down in DC for some other activities, brought them to some of the Zudo developments. A lot of the bigger developments at this scale, they tend to have, you know, for the residents that are there, some very large common spaces that have almost like a business center, are concerned in those activities. But we don't have a separate, say, business space proposed as like an office-type use.
And the only, part of the reason I bring that up is just, you think about the pressures on the T, and then we're adding more pressure by having more residences who want to use the T to go into Boston. Maybe you make that a destination for commuters to come there, whether it be small companies or things like that. And there's obvious reasons why that could actually be a nice space for companies with its connection, its easy connection to Boston and to Cambridge as well. That's sort of why I've kind of thought about, you know, and it might be actually a really good use for something.
Yeah. I mean, I know we have an awful lot of office space running on the other side of the shore as well.
So just with the station itself, is that going to be improved as well, the interior? So there's going to be, is there going to be a new headhouse? Is that what I heard?
So we connect to the headhouse. So today, if you're in the parking lot, and I would say, you actually see kind of a flash window?
Yeah.
So we would actually physically connect to that with the garage.
Okay.
The T's pretty specific on drawing lines on the site of where we can touch and can't touch, so we basically can't touch the bus loop, and we really can't touch the station per se, other than connect to it. So if someone enters the garage in their car, they would actually take an elevator down to the level of the headhouse and go right in. You don't have to go back down the ground. The station itself, it's, you know, the T, I'm not sure exactly what their long-term plans are. I mean, we would love to see, you know, brand-new development there. We would love to see it upgraded, maybe painted, cleaned up a little with cerulines as well.
And will there be disruption in terms of, I would imagine there'll be disruption in terms of parking at some point?
Yeah, if we go back to the plan, we can explain that, because, go back to the ground that's going. So it happens when we start construction, we have to preserve access for vehicles, pedestrians, and there'll actually be phasing plans on how that all works. But during the initial phase, the parking in this end of the site remains on the circuits. And what happens is, we start construction on this end of the property, and the first thing we do is get, we have to open the parking garage before we can open anything else. We have a strong incentive to do that, because for all the spaces that are taken out of use while we're in the construction, we actually have to pay the daily rate for all those spaces. So, you know, we, and as soon as we can get that in place and get the traffic rerouted up the ramps and into it, then we can open up the elements of the site. So that's the very first piece of it is to provide that garage.
A concern always is, this board is, you know, parking, we need to take the spaces away where you're going to go, you know, try to keep them on the loopholes as best as we can.
I mean, I know that the T is working with the city on some interim plans. I don't know if Rob has any better information, because they know they're looking at the Wallaston Station and potentially the Squatom parking area, so I know there's some things in the study.
Right, right, exactly. You know, we would expect there would be an interim plan approved or proposed by the T, not necessarily this group, obviously, they'll be part of that. To my earlier comment on the case prior to the resident that spoke, this was a subject of discussion with Secretary Pollak in the late summer, when we toured all four sites. All four sites, all four stations are slated to have major rehab or major development occur in a very short order here. So the city, the mayor's administration, is working on a, not a station plan, we're working on a Quincy plan, to, you know, look at all four stations and what the requirements to allow those rehab or that development to occur. You know, we know in past experiences, from time to time, you know, that the city, you know, need, I mean, the MBTH needs to have, you know, potentially temporary parking structures. There could be shuttle bus systems to off-site locations. Everything is on the table, and everything is under consideration. But we look to be working directly with the MBTH on that program that will be incorporated with this project.
Yeah. Having grown up in Montclair, I couldn't be more excited about this development potential for, but I want to make sure to be able to temper my expectations and to understand what the actual end goal is. So is the hope that this area could not just be an amenity for the neighborhood, but become a destination in and of itself, that people would go and get off at North Quincy, who don't live there, and hang out? Is this area big enough for a restaurant and a bar and, you know, multiple sort of uses that will draw people to that area?
You know, I guess when we look at it, we'd like to be able to serve, we'll call it kind of the general area. We're not looking to draw people from 10 miles away. We're not looking for some type of specialty retail use that doesn't exist somewhere else. I think, you know, talking to the people in the area, we're a better community, meaning, you know, a lot of them spoke about the idea of putting specialty groceries, so we're looking at, you know, various options on that. And I think what they're trying to do is really serve people that are, you know, I guess within a mile or a couple of miles, but, you know, not trying to draw traffic in from much further than that. Now, at ground level, to the extent, we could incorporate, you know, cafe-type uses, those type of things, maybe some, you know, similar things that are going to really serve the neighborhood. I think that's kind of our focus on this. The idea that somebody might come in off the T to go here specifically for these type of venues, I'm not sure that we're going to, you know, have things that are so unique that people might want to do that.
Interesting.
We want to make it, I guess, our real focus is, we're really trying to look at the immediate neighborhood and what, you know, best way to serve those people.
Something I'm thinking in my head is right up the street, but too far from the train to make it super accessible, is a restaurant like Assembly, which does draw people. You know, people tell me that they leave South Boston, drive into North Quincy, and come to this restaurant. And, you know, I think that this would be a great site for, you know, not just necessarily a neighborhood grocery store, but also, if you think of the restaurants.
Okay, okay, great. Any other questions? Mr. McKenna? Well, thank you.
Thank you for letting us come in. We appreciate it, knowing you're along the gentile.
Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, I just want to add one more thing to the board. The city has identified Woodard and Curran as a peer review engineer for this project. Woodard and Curran has done extensive work in the stormwater area. They were part of the teal field expansion adjacent to this site. So you can expect Woodard and Curran to be the peer review engineer on this. And this project also trips the NEPA thresholds, so there will be a state permitting process that will be mirroring the local review process as well. So expect to see information relayed to the members here as it relates to that process. That's it.
Thank you. Do you have any other business?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, we'll be back in a minute. Thank you. Do you have a motion to adjourn? Thank you all. Our next meeting is the 8th of February.